We have Logan and Hadley Presnell leading the pledge from Bethlehem.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great job.
Great job.
One more, one more. Charles, do they parents want lady pigs?
We have one more?
No, I hope that they have actually filled in what they were supposed to about the topic.
Okay. Thank you very much. All board members, you have before you the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Next to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Unanimous consent. We approve the agenda as we move forward. So next on the agenda is honors and recognitions. Dr. Hefner.
Thank you Chairman Argüés. I'm always pleased to highlight the great things going on in this public school system. And Board Member Ryan, if you'll come up, we are going to start by recognizing two students. Tonight, I will start our honors and recognitions portion of the meeting with special recognition for two of our high school students. These two students have been accepted to Governor's School for the summer. The students will stay on campus at Greensboro College for the four-week session. Lucy Privet, daughter of Kevin and Rachel Privet of Hidnite, is going to be recognized first, so if Lucy would come forward. Lucy will attend Governor's School to study natural sciences. She is an 11th grade student at the Alexander Early College. Please give her a round of applause. Congratulations. Lucy, we're going to get both of your pictures. If you will, stand in front of the motto right here and we'll get both of you in a picture, okay? Thank you. Also attending, Griffin Duncan from Alexander Central High School. Griffin is the son of Robert and Beth Duncan of Taylorsville and will also attend Governor's School at Greensboro College to study math.
Great job.
Excellent.
The North Carolina Governor's School is the nation's oldest statewide summer residential program for gifted school students. Congratulations, Griffin. I'm so jazzed, we're going to do a variety of pictures. We're going to start with students only. So the two of you feel wonderful. Okay? And then I would invite parents and principals of these students, if they are here, to please come up and get in a picture as well.
I'll get a little space.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Absolutely, I'll get in there.
Mary Brown will let me stand beside her. I probably had to put the wide angle on us. Do we need to restructure?
No. You did go to wide angle.
I did.
Oh, everybody squeezes, pipe in your hands. Angle your bodies like they're you got. So you angle, you manage.
Okay, stay where you are. Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Board Member Robinson, will you help me with the next award?
I won't do like I did the last time and have them all out of order.
Next, I'm going to ask Scotty Cook, along with his students, Micah Chapman, Dixie Smith, Bradley Hendren, and Mason Sink to please come forward. Mr. Cook teaches agricultural mechanics and agricultural metal fabrication classes at Alexander Central High School. Andy Von Cannon, the Western Region Ag Education Coordinator, is here with us, and he would like to present something to all of you. So Mr. Von Cannon, if you will come forward, I actually would like to turn the podium to you to talk just a little bit about what you're presenting.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Well, good evening. I'm here on behalf of the North Carolina FFA Association, as well as NC State University and the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund. In 2000, the General Assembly appropriated some money into the Tobacco Trust Fund as part of a master settlement, and those funds were here to be used in our state to improve agriculture. And this year, the North Carolina Trust Fund Commission awarded $300,000 to North Carolina FFA Foundation, and we have been able to distribute those funds throughout the state. In this year's round of grant funding, there were 20 schools selected, and Alexander Central was one of those 20. Those programs received up to $17,875. And I want you to look at the check that these folks will receive in just a moment and see if that number rings a bell. These folks were going to expand their agriculture program. They're going to be building a 30-by-30 metal storage building for expansion of materials and supplies to go along with some of the programming that they have there with their sawmill and other projects. These folks have done a fabulous job. I get to work with Mr. Cook, Mr. Sink, and Mr. Mitchell as a regional ag ed coordinator, and it's amazing to watch the growth of the program, but also the sustainability of this program. And I applaud them on the work that they continuously do, not only just to teach agriculture, but to give students authentic experiences. And this will continue with this grant program and these funds. So help me in congratulating them. I'm going to give them a big check and a sign, and we'll do some more photos. And let's give them a round of applause.
Could I also get one for my director and principal?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
If you guys angle your body like I asked the other term to angle, I don't know. One more try. Okay, ready?
Stay where you are. It's hard to wrangle them back in.
Good job.
Congratulations, Mr. Cook.
Board Member Bowman, if you'll come help with the next award. Our next recognition is for the Testing and Accountability and Public Information Director, Dr. Danita Dalrevis. Dr. Dalrevis graduated last month from the North Carolina School Superintendent's Association Aspiring Superintendent Program in Durham. This year, the aspiring leaders brought together 37 district leaders from across the state for sessions on leadership, the superintendency, working with the community, funding schools, STEM engagement, and much more. The North Carolina School Superintendent Association supports the 115 superintendents statewide and has been instrumental in helping more than 40 candidates become top school leaders across North Carolina. Congratulations, Dr. Dalrevis.
Congratulations.
Board Member Dagenhart, will you help me with the last award? Lastly, we want to recognize Digital Learning and Innovation Specialist Jessica Esposito. Mrs. Esposito has been awarded certification from the International Society for Technology and Education, also known as ISTI. This certification is a rigorous and internationally recognized program. The goal is to promote student creativity and digital citizenship through technology. Mrs. Esposito is one of only 50 people statewide that have this training. ISTI certification focuses on using technology for collaboration and personalized learning and takes several months to complete. Congratulations, Jessica Esposito.
Great job.
Chairman Argüés, I have a couple of other recognitions, but they'll come during my report.
So next on the agenda is public comment. I will read the public comment to the board procedures. First and foremost, each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Point two, only one speaker will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Point three, speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairman in the order in which their names appear on the signup sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or a school employee will cause for the ending of that particular speaker's time as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate the person's privilege to address the board. Point four, the public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member of the board. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Point five, speakers will refrain from discussions of any of the following items. Items which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisition or liquidations, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with the General Statute 115(c) - 321 and the Open Meetings Law, which protects students and employees' records. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentations. And you embed that the public comment session would exceed 30 minutes. The board would make a vote on allowing for the additional speakers, but in this case, we have six on three. That's 18 minutes. So first coming forward is Dr. Chris Smith.
I forgot to do that. I'm sorry.
Hello Chairman and members of the board and invited guests from the community. I'm Dr. Chris Smith. I'm an instructional designer with North Carolina Virtual Public School and the parent of two Bethlehem Elementary School children. So Alexander Central, Alexander County Schools is in the middle of their 2023-2025 strategic plan, which we see at the center of the room, children first. And so within that, there are a couple of things with the goal of putting students and staff first and ultimate commitment to public education for all students throughout the county. And so I want to talk a little bit about that this evening. As we get into more into that strategic plan, there are different pieces in terms of beliefs and values that are a part of that that talk about healthy school environment, utilization of innovative technologies, support and education professionals, collaboration in the community, but mainly recognizing, valuing, and investing in the individual differences of each learner within the district. So the vision of ACS is to graduate highly skilled students who are confident in their ability to become successful adults. The mission is to educate and empower every student to become a responsible and productive citizen. Tonight, we're here to discuss the unfortunate circumstances of the reduction in force that's had to come about because of budget issues. As part of that, Policy 7920 talks about the policy and procedures that are in place in terms of the reduction in force, and there's six main areas that are supposed to be a part of that consideration, which include work performance, areas of licensure, program enrollment, service, and extra duties, length of service, and degree level. From a parent and state educator, state-level educators' perspective, it appears as if an overemphasis was placed on the length of service for this school system, and many of the other factors were not considered as much. Among those slated to be cut are one that was just received, just received an award earlier, which is an international award with the ISTI Award in terms of our Digital Learning and Innovation Specialist, who this year alone has brought in over $80,000 in grants, and it's my understanding in the five years, that's closer to $330,000 worth of grants. That $80,000 grant for this year is one of only 12 out of 115 school districts awarded that money throughout the state. Along with that slated to be cut are the media coordinator for Bethlehem Elementary. These two combined to give my daughters a STEM education that they won't get otherwise. And so with that being said, there are some things in terms of North Carolina's Digital Learning Plan that's now a part of the National EdTech Plan that came out in January. If you look at page 19 of that, North Carolina is all over it and what we expect of our kids and our students moving forward. But with that, next week, I go with the policy fellows to the General Assembly, where we are going to be asking for funding for one-to-one initiatives throughout the entire state of North Carolina beyond test or funds when they end in September. For us to be able to bring that money back to the district and have that equipment available going on, because once this renewal runs out, that money's not going to be there. So we're going to be asking for that. Yet we're taking away the initiatives that provide that STEM education. So I understand, I believe that's my timer, so my time's up. But just with that being said, I just ask that we go back and look at the policy and the strategic plan and the goals and the objectives of Alexander County Schools and that information, and take those into consideration as we move forward with decisions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Mary Beth White.
Good evening, Dr. Hefner and board members. I'm so glad to be here tonight. I'm Mary Beth White. I'm a teacher at Alexander Central. I'm also a parent of children in the community, three kids, two of whom are school-aged. So I have one son and baby Cougars with us at the high school. He's part of our 1190. And then also a son at Taylorsville. I come to you tonight to speak on behalf of my colleagues at the high school, specifically one colleague in particular, Madam Nancy Greiner. I am the World Language Department Chair, serving at their request this year, and I just want to take a few moments to say, I know you're about to get an inpouring of information from lots of people about the reduction in force policy and all of your movements going forward. But I would just take this time to plead with you to prayerfully and carefully consider all your decision-making in this process. I know it's very difficult. It's been very difficult for all of us. It's been difficult for our administrators at the school level as well. So I acknowledge that, that you're doing a difficult job. You've been tasked with a big task here as a school board. But Madam Greiner is a shining star in our school. I've been at Alexander Central my entire career. I was blessed to join them in 2004. And when I was in English and then came back to World Language, and when I did, Madam Greiner and my colleagues welcomed me with open arms. And she has been the epitome of a professional colleague. Every sort of professional organization that we can be in as language teachers, she is a part of. And not just a member, she's also a leader. She has presented at Foreign Language Association of North Carolina. She did so this year. She has presented at the Southeastern Conference on Teaching Language. She did that regionally for us just about a month or so ago. Just as of, I guess about 24 hours ago, she received an award, a commendation, for the American Association of Teachers of French, and she is the North Carolina Teacher of the Year for that association. So she'll be recognized later. But I just want to take a moment to say I'm so proud of her, and she leads in our profession. She truly cares about our students. She cares about our professional development. She helps us in professional learning teams and school improvement teams, leads professional development at our school level. And I know that a lot of my colleagues across the county are very concerned about jobs and reduction in force. But I would be very deficient in my duties as a colleague and as a department chair and as a friend to not brag on my very esteemed, very intelligent, very tender-hearted, and wonderful colleague, Madam.
Third on the list is Madam Nancy Greiner.
Bonsoir and good evening to Dr. Hefner and members of the school board. My name is Madam Nancy Greiner. I am the French teacher and teacher cadet instructor at Alexander Central High School. This is my ninth year in Alexander County and my 21st year teaching in North Carolina. When I was hired in 2015, I was asked to attend the new teacher training at the central office. And I received this bracelet from Dr. Hefner during that training, along with all of the other new teachers. She told us it had the district's motto, "Champions for Children" on it, and she charged all of us with making that our focus every day that we walk into our classroom. To this day, this bracelet sits on my desk as a reminder of that charge. I would like to share with you some of the children that I have been a champion for during my time. Out of respect for student confidentiality, I have changed their names. While Allison was taking my French I class, she also had a full load of AP classes. She was a dedicated student who always participated in class, asked questions to ensure her own understanding. But for medical reasons, she missed a few weeks in my class and wasn't able to do any work at that time. When she came back, I worked with her to get her caught up, not just so that she would pass, but so that she would get the grade that she would have had if those medical situations had not occurred. In 2019, before school started, staff at the high school received an urgent email from the principal stating that there was an exchange student from Brazil coming for the year, but his host family had suddenly backed out. Jose had already left his home and was on his way to training before coming to the U.S. My husband and I could not commit to a year, but we were able to offer him a home for two months until a permanent home could be found. And then we were even able to take him to Florida to Disney World before the pandemic closed everything. He told us that only the rich kids in Brazil get to go there. I had Erica in my French I class, but she could not fit French II in her schedule, so she took it through NCVPS. Online language courses are set up with a lot of rote memorization, which can be quickly forgotten. How I teach in person, students acquire French through usage. While doing her online class, Erica came to my room many times in tears after taking tests and getting many answers wrong. Each time I worked with her, she threw each question and then reinforced the concept so she could continue to acquire the language instead of just getting credit for memorizing things before a test. David went to private schools, and when he came to me, he was excited about the possibility of learning a language. He did excellent in French I, but in French II, he ran into problems. And he came up to me one day and he said, "If I don't quit vaping, I'm going to die, and I don't know what to do." And I immediately sprang into action, and I contacted school people and people in the county to try and get this student help. And to this day, I am working with that student to make sure that in June, he graduates and walks across the stage. There is one thing that I remember, there is one more thing that I remember that Dr. Hefner told us. She said to make yourself irreplaceable. I believe that I have fulfilled the expectation to be a champion for children and to be irreplaceable. And I also know that there is still more work that I need to do. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Heather Tetter.
I don't know how I'm going to follow that speech, y'all. I'm watching the timer. My name is Heather Tetter. I am one of Nancy's longtime colleagues on both the state and local level. I am a fellow French teacher at Watauga High School, but I am also the Regional Representative for the American Association of Teachers of French, and that encompasses the whole Southeast. I have just a couple of things. I don't need to highlight her credentials, because I feel like Mary Beth White has very much touched on that. And also, in the letters that my colleagues and I have sent to the board and the county commissioners, you can see she has a wealth of experience and brings so much to the school. Also, at Watauga High School, we have a teacher cadet program. Nancy is somebody that we look to for teacher cadets. I mean, she had a student who was a state officer. That's a huge deal. Think of all the programs. And sweet Alexander High School, Alexander Central, they gave a teacher cadet candidate the opportunity to serve. So she's brought a ton to the school. In addition, I would like to also address, I've got my notes on my phone, equity at the high school for world languages. It is very prevalent in our state and community that Spanish is important. People need to have a knowledge. However, let me tell you, French brings so much to the state of North Carolina. Canada and Quebec, where French is one of the first languages, that is our number-one trade partner, okay? The percentage has gone up 25% in the past 10 years between trade with North Carolina and France. That is only France. That does not include Belgium, Quebec, Switzerland. Also, France is the fastest growing. Also, France is the fastest-growing language in the world because of Central, Northern, and Western Africa. The birth rate is very high. I don't know if y'all knew this, but Kinshasa and the DRC, the Democratic Republic of Congo, here's your jeopardy moment, y'all. It's the largest French-speaking city in the world. So there's a huge market for French. There's also, I went to your enrollment page on the website, and I clicked, you can get documents to enroll your child in French, Spanish, and English. So French is in your community already. It would be a real shame to deprive students who come into Alexander Central already speaking Spanish, the option to learn a new language, okay? So I really encourage you to keep her. In addition, let me take a look at your Alexander County Schools' long-term plan. If you look right here under priority number one, Excellence, Instructional Excellence and Alignment, Nancy has created so many initiatives, one of which is a direct exchange to France. She has 20 to 25 students who are going to come from Normandy to live in the community with Alexander Central High School students, and then they will do an exchange back to France to live with their buddies in April. That is huge. What a mark in the community. That's really, you know, feathering y'all's cap and for Madam Greiner. So it goes with your district plan to keep her. I encourage you to find a way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Caitlin Davis.
Good evening, Dr. Hefner. Good evening, board. Good evening, guests. Did you know that today is National Librarians' Day? I want to take a moment and recognize our amazing school librarian, Ms. Allison Brown. She has been recognized by her colleagues as Bethlehem Certified Support Staff of the Year two years in a row, including this year. She has supported and guided our students to victory in the countywide Battle of the Books for the past two years. In case you are unaware, they do go to district competition next Thursday. Lucky girls. Ms. Brown assists the fifth graders every year with Balloons Over Bethlehem, an engaging project that is rooted in English language standards and technology. She organizes and oversees yearly two book fairs, and during dismissal, you can usually find her at spot number one, helping students into their car with a smile on her face. This does not cover all that Allison does for our students, families, staff, and community. Ms. Brown has taught 14 years and has been a school librarian for 10 years, a total of 24 years of service to the education of our future. I cannot imagine how hard it was for her last week to be celebrated during National Library Week while at the same time finding out she will no longer have a job come next year. Additionally, Ms. Brown, along with Ms. Esposito, work hard to help staff incorporate meaningful technology experiences into our students' learning. Together, they help us as staff use technology to lessen the burden of that ever-growing list of things we as teachers must do. Next year, sadly, that will cease to exist. I understand that hard decisions need to be made and that inevitably someone will be upset. What I struggle to understand is how this decision truly puts our children first, which is our county motto. Your decision to cut these two positions, among others, will hinder our students' abilities to learn in an engaging and future-forward way. This decision, from what is known by the public, seems to go against what stakeholders said they wanted, which was consolidation of jobs, particularly with those that don't immediately impact student lives and learning. Ms. Brown and Ms. Esposito immediately impacted student lives and learning. Family, staff, and others were unwilling to cut specials, teachers, and teachers assistants, yet that is exactly what is being done. I ask that we do better, expect better, and fight for what our children deserve as we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Next, we have Melissa Wisnant.
Good evening. My name's Melissa. I have a son who attends Towes Well Elementary. I think I spoke to you briefly on the phone. My son has seasonal affective disorder, and I wanted to have the opportunity to explain what that is, if those who don't know. It is a type of depression. It affects about 10 million people every year. It's self-diagnosed. So we had decided with my husband, because my son had behavioral issues, and we could not figure out what the trigger was. And so we had decided or had thought, does the change of season have an effect on his behavior? And so when we Googled it, it does. So that's where SAD comes into play. So there are treatments. We talked to his behavioral doctor, and he was talking about antidepressants and things. And of course, a 10-year-old, I'm not putting him on antidepressants. But there was this thing called light therapy. And what light therapy is, is it mimics the sun. And seasonal affective disorder only hap, well, it does only, the majority happens in the fall, in the winter months. And so there is a pattern with him from kindergarten up to present. There was a pattern. It always happened around October, November. So when we Googled light therapy, we Googled a sad lamp. And so for those who don't know this, I just wanted to show you, this is what they call a happy light. My son uses this every day, and he uses it like this. He uses it every day. He uses it 30 minutes to 60 minutes every morning, and he sits by it about 18 inches before school. And let me tell you, this has made a significant difference with him, with his behavior. He is more focused. He participates more. He does no longer get in any kind of trouble. Now, does he act up? Does he have bad days? Absolutely. But I tell him, you, if you have a student who is struggling or has depression or have a behavioral problem, I'm telling you, this light really works. And from a parent's standpoint, I couldn't be happier with the way he has turned out, not just with the light, along with medication has helped, because it's been a trial and error with him. And the support of Towes Well Elementary, I know they're here representing. I want to tell you, the staff has been more supportive with me and more open to, I guess, discussion of what goes on with him. Mental health is a huge issue in this community, and we really need to, you know, really look into it and see what we can do to help our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, it was Caitlin Davis qualifying what her topic was. So thank you all for your input and your comments. Much appreciated and listened to. Thank you. So the next on the agenda is a consent agenda. Has the board had the opportunity to review the consent agenda? And what is the pleasure of the board? And any comments or questions related to it?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
We have a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? So the consent agenda is hereby approved. We'll go next to the reports. Bethlehem Elementary School update. Mr. Charles Draper. Do we need to hold these in hand?
Yeah, I'll get to those eventually. I still have my guitar pick. Gift or something. So. Well, board, thanks for having me tonight. Good to see you guys. Board Chair and Dr. Hefner, thanks for having me. Great to see the room packed out tonight. I'm Charles Draper. I'm the principal of Bethlehem Elementary School, and I'm going to share a little bit about our school. And yeah, I'm excited. I could stand up here and talk all night long, but I won't do that. I'll wait till you visit the school in a couple of weeks and we can talk more. But as you see on the screen here, Going on Tour Bethlehem Elementary School, this is actually the puzzle that I presented at our opening staff meeting, Going on Tour 2023. And that was our theme. And board, I'm going to ask you guys, to go on tour, what does it take for a band to go on tour?
Instruments.
Instruments. What else? What kind of bands go on tour?
Successful.
Successful, right? Yeah. So, you know, for a band to go on tour, you got to be good, right? A band does, and if they do go on tour and they're not good, well, that just doesn't happen, right? Like, I won't go down that path. I'll digress. So going on tour, why do bands go on tour? And that's what I started with at my opening staff meeting, is I said, why do bands go on tour? And it's normally because they're the best. And that's really the essence, you know? Any major band that goes on tour, they go because they're the best. And so years passed, and just a disclaimer, I'm not a big theme guy. I never have been. My first three years as a principal, I never had a theme, but then my wife told me, like, you should really do this theme thing, that's what principals do. And I was like, okay. So anyways, so I got to Bethlehem, I was like, what kind of theme do we need to do? And so we did like a mountain theme my first year, kind of sprung it. Ms. Motley helped me out, and we kind of scrambled, did that. And then last year, we did the Rock Man thing. And we said, you know what? We're Rock Man. We have all of our pieces, right? You might have your lead singer, but you have your instrumentalists, you have your behind-the-scenes people running the chords and all the different things. So we were Rock Man last year, and this year, we're going on tour because we're the best. And don't just take my word for it. We pride ourselves at Bethlehem. We want to be the best. We want to strive to be the best. I believe our county as a whole wants to do that as well, and every school in our district. But these are just our EOG test scores from last year, you know? Whenever, I could have just inundated you with data until it was just coming out of your ears. I could have shown you data from this year, and I could talk about more data. But this is just last year at the end of the year where we landed. And as you see, beside all of these, there are asterisks. If there's one asterisk, it means that we were first in the district, two, second, three, third, fourth, so on and so forth. So in all subject areas, we were at 68.8% proficient, and that's in third, fourth, and fifth grade across the board, which that's a big deal, right? Like, we're pushing that 70% mark. I talk about the unicorn, like, what, you know, unicorn, it's unique. It's one of a kind, right? So I say that unicorn mark we shoot for is at 80%, right? Like, that's the thing everybody wants to shoot for, and we're inching our way closer to that. You see every grade level, third, fourth, and fifth grade, where they are, top across the district. And then also, I don't have the state information up there, but I have that as well. Fifth grade, second across the district. And then you go down through, and you look at reading, you know, you're looking at grade levels that are 69% proficient, 65% proficient, you know, fifth grade, 53% proficient, and we're working on that number there. You know, we worked hard there, but just wait till you see this year's fifth grade EOGs. I'm telling you, we're going to be pushing the 60s in that, and that's due to the hard work that we're doing in math. You have the same thing. We're pushing right around 70. All of our grade levels are right in that 70 marker, mid-60s. So just great things in the science. I can't leave them out. They're 68%. So, and that's top in the district, and I would dare say across the state.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Sorry, what did I say? Sorry, I can't see. But anyways, as you can tell, the data shows that, you know, we're the best, and we pride ourselves in that. And I don't say that with arrogance or cockiness, because this doesn't just happen. And I'll say again, this doesn't just happen. And what happened, like, everybody in this room, what we do, it doesn't just, you don't just wake up one morning and you end up at 68.8% proficient. That takes time, and it takes effort. As a school, we were a B school. It's a few times in the history of our school that we've been a B since they've been doing that. And that's a huge deal. But I would just say, it doesn't just happen. It takes hard work, it takes grind, it takes grit, and it takes every morning waking up and having the right people in the right places. So whenever I say that, you know, we want to be the best, we want to continue to level up, and I'm going to talk about how we're going to level up, I don't say that haphazardly. It takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of passion, it takes our people. So going on tour, why do we go on tour? Because you're the best. What do we need whenever we go on tour? So you have to prepare to go on tour? You need a team, right? Nobody goes on tour by themselves, unless you're Taylor Swift, maybe. I don't know.
She's not by herself.
Oh, she's not by herself.
Travis is always with her.
Well, that's good to know. And obviously, I'm not Taylor Swift. So our staff, and I'll start, you know, our students. We have 461 students at Bethlehem Elementary School, and, you know, largest elementary school in the district, almost as large as West Alexander Middle School, give or take a few students. But each and every one of those students, pre-K through fifth grade, we build a connection with, we believe in, and we are there each and every day to care for them. And then I have my staff members, 37 certified staff members, 23 of those classroom teachers, you can read the numbers there. We have our specials teachers. I do have a STEAM teacher that we brought on middle of the year, and I noted that that comes out of Title I funding. This is, we received Title I funds this year in the amount of $144,000, and we've been very intentional with that money to make sure everything we do goes back to impacting kids. And so that's been excellent, and you should hear our students talk about that class. My own kids go into the STEAM class, they get to create, make, and do a number of things. Our certified EC staff, we have four of those, and just, I'll talk about our EC staff real quick. We, schools across the state, they get labeled as TSI schools and EC, that's Targeted, Sustained, I don't know the whole acronym, but really what it says is, like, your EC kids aren't growing like they ought to. That's the layman's terms for that. And we have not been labeled that at Bethlehem, and I'll have to say it's because our EC staff, they work harder, they work long hours. Oftentimes, whenever I'm going home and it's normally late, if there's any other car in the parking lot, guess who it is? It's my EC staff. They're holding meetings, and they are making that happen. Doesn't just happen. So I want to give a shout out to them. Counselors, social workers, nurses, I could talk about everybody on this list, so I need to move on, but they all have a piece in it. My instructional coach, Ms. Motley, is integral. She's been at Bethlehem Elementary School for a long time, and she is just super instrumental in what we do there and how we run things. My assistant principal, she's not here, Ms. Jenkins, she's at the Soil and Water Award Ceremony tonight in my stead there, but she does an excellent job as well. And then our classified staff. So, and we're starting to talk about our teacher assistants, our bus drivers, our EC assistants, our cafeteria staff, office staff. None of this functions and runs without each and every one of them. My TAs, they're constantly driving buses, they're constantly covering classes, they're constantly really doing whatever gap needs to be filled, they fill that gap. And first off, we don't get our most prized possession to school unless they're there. And, you know, whenever sickness hits, or somebody gets sick on the bus, they pick it up. They get phone calls at 5:00 in the morning, hey, can you get on this bus? So it doesn't just stop with their 40-hour work week. Our interventionists, we have three interventionists that are outstanding. We pay for them out of Title I, and ESSER funds have also covered those. So we've been, you know, reorganizing some funding to make sure we can fund them again next year and getting creative there. I skip my office staff, but I joke all the time, but I don't really joke. I say, they run the building, I'm just there, and that's very much true. Those ladies run that building in and out. They know who's coming in, they know what's going on, they keep me informed, and they're just a smiling face as community members come in and out and as people call. And they're really my right and left hand. They, I mean, anything I need from them, they jump right in. Custodians, they go above and beyond, before and after school care, OT support, BT, our resource officer, all the above. So I just, and I thought about, I'll just let you read that. No, like, I read each one of them because each one of them has that important of a role, right? You go on tour with a band, you know, your chord guy leaves a chord at home, guess what? The show doesn't go on. It just doesn't. So each one of these individuals, and that's what we hit on the beginning of the year, you are a piece of this puzzle, you are part of that band, and without you, we don't move forward, and it's so important, and it's so integral. So that's our team. Furthermore, we have community partners. So we have a list of community partners here, and I probably left somebody off, and if so, I'm sorry, but so many people help our school out. They're part of that team as well. And so I have a list here, and I'm not going to talk about each one of these, but a couple new ones on the list, Rock Creek Farms, they came out for an innovative day that we had, and I'll talk about our innovative. So, that's our team. Um, furthermore, we have community partners, so, um, we have a list of community partners here, and I probably left somebody off, and if so, I'm sorry. Uh, but so many people help our school out, um, they're part of that team as well. Um, and so I have a list here, uh, and I, I'm not gonna talk about each one of these, but a couple new ones on the list, uh, Rock Creek Farms, they came out for an Innovative Day, um, that we had, and I'll talk about our, about our Innovative Fridays that we have, but they came out and, um, presented to our students, he, he brought out his big spreader, his, his farm equipment, and showed it off to our K-one students, they love that. Um, Hidden Art Center has been a great partner for us, they'll be coming out, uh, with their Appalachian Young People's Theater, uh, in a week or so to present to our students. And then, uh, Pure Good Fitness, they really did some neat stuff with us, they came out and did some staff wellness in the afternoon, we got in there and, uh, staff got to exercise, they really enjoyed that, I need to schedule some more. I've, I've kinda gotten lazy the past couple months of that, but they really enjoy that, but just for that, that staff wellness, you gotta, you gotta take care of your people, um, so that's been great. But all the people on this list, they support us above and beyond, uh, what we deserve, but, um, they buy into what we do. So what else do we need as we prepare to go on tour? We need a vision, um, and our mission and vision is super important, um, our mission statement's been there since Dr. Holler's been there, I believe. Um, and, uh, so it's, it's kinda stood the test of time, it's still very relevant, it's still very in tune with our mission and why we exist. But, um, a couple years ago, we created the rest of this page, so our vision statement, we talk a lot about engaging, equipping, inspiring students to love learning, lead, and thrive. And I love our vision statement, and I love it, because in essence, if I wanna tell you a one line or what we're about, that's what I recite to a parent. A parent comes and says, I wanna do a tour of your building, and they do, I mean, that's the first thing I say, they say, what are you about? We wanna engage, we wanna engage, equip, and inspire students to love learning, lead, and thrive. And, um, as I look at that vision statement, the word thrive is, it really sticks out to me, at first, we want it to be success, right? Be successful, what does it mean to be successful? But, um, picture a garden, right? Um, I, I'm not a great, uh, I'm not great with gardens and that kinda thing, but any average person can drive down the road and can tell that garden's thriving or it's not. All right, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that, and you can also tell if weeds are choking it out. But we want our, we want our kids to thrive, so we have to tend to it, we gotta care for it, we gotta take care of them, we gotta, um, we gotta nurture them, and, and it takes everybody. It takes not just my staff, but the parents, the families, the community members, it takes everybody, so just, um, and then even for my staff, like, I want my staff to thrive, I want, I need to be thriving, and if I'm not thriving, I'm a knot on a log, then it's just gonna bleed down through everybody, so just, we talk about it, what does it look like to thrive? And, and what is, um, and how do we accomplish these goals? So that's always at the forefront of our mind. Um, our core values, um, I love our core values, it's just what we're about as well. Um, honestly, with my interviews that I've had over the summer, once I created this, the first thing I handed them was our core values, and I said, if you can't be about this, don't waste my time, don't waste your time, we'll end the, we'll end the interview right now. Um, that's how strongly we feel about our core values, our mission, our vision. Uh, but just honestly, treating others the way you wanna be treated, working hard, loyalty, all those pieces, just instilling those in our kids, but then also that's the expectation across the building. Um, so before we move forward and go on our tour, you gotta know what you're, what you're shooting for, right? You gotta know what your vision is, you gotta know why you're going on tour, and, um, so I thought I'd be remiss if I moved forward without talking through those briefly. Um, so, um, our strategy, strategic narrative, this is the last part of this, um, and, uh, it just further kind of develops what we wanna be about, and just what our, what our school needs to look like. It needs to be safe, nurturing, engaging, supportive, accepting, relevant, and fun, and I'm gonna talk about each one of those, especially the fun part, and how we're incorporating a lot of fun in our learning. Um, because we know kids, some kids love ABCs, one-two-threes, but a lot don't, um, so we gotta make it fun, we gotta, we gotta inspire them to come back and want more. And that last part, uh, typically at the end of my announcements, I say our strategic narrative, our motto, um, I say it in some way, shape, or form, I just tell my kids and staff and everybody, it's for everybody. Today, bring your best so you can do your best, just give us your best. Um, can't ask for anything more, your best today, may be different than what it is tomorrow, tell kids all the time, I don't need you to make straight hundreds or be perfect, because you're gonna, you're not gonna do that, just give me your best. And, um, and that's just kinda the bar we set, and that we try to stand by. Um, some days are better than others, but, um, that's, that's our vision, our mission, and, and where we're going, so, um, yeah. So how can we level up, you know? Uh, we're going on tour, what does it look like? Um, but how, how, how have we decided to level up this school year? Um, there it goes, perfect. Uh, so instructional excellence, so at the top there, I have our reading proficiency, math proficiency, science proficiency, you see, um, so last year's is, uh, the year before last is the first number, and last year is the second number, I just wanted you to see the growth. So we went from fifty-six point nine percent to sixty-three percent reading proficiency, went from sixty-four to sixty-nine in math proficiency, eighty-two to eighty-six in science proficiency. So even as we go into the year, we've made growth, so we've, we, we have a model of how to level up, so, but we don't wanna just stay there, we wanna keep moving it forward and keep leveling up. Um, and then, uh, so as, as we get into this year, we wanna move those numbers up even more, so this, so this is how we're gonna do that. Uh, by twenty-twenty-five, we want reading proficiency to be at seventy percent, math to be at eighty percent, um, and, and those are our goals, so how are we gonna do this? Um, first, we're just gonna be, we're gonna be intentional, everything we do is super intentional, early interventions. The kids struggling in kindergarten, first, second grade, we need to do early interventions, we need to catch them up now, uh, we really can't wait till second grade, so we have an acceleration block of thirty minutes across every grade level, you've heard that before, but it is so important, and our interventionists play a crucial part in that. Um, our kindergartners start interventions in September. I've been places where they don't start in kindergarten until January or February, but we start early, because we know if we can catch them early, then we don't have to catch them up later. Uh, and, um, so letters implementation, you've heard about letters, the science of reading, morphology focus in grades three, five. Um, a lot of training in morphology, the district paid for all of our three, five teachers to go and have OG morphology training, and I believe that's a key to comprehension. If you don't know your roots and your prefixes and your suffixes and your Latin and, and all those different parts of the words, then you're not probably gonna understand, uh, what you're reading as well. Vocabulary, we, we needed to level up in vocabulary, we knew what that looked like, uh, we needed to build background knowledge, we needed to do those things, so we purchased some things out of Title One. Writing, we started a new writing methodology called the, um, the Writing Revolution this year, and I could talk to you for two hours just about that alone. Actually, someone from LR came and toured our campus last week, just to see what we were doing, because they're starting to use that in their teacher prep program, and, um, I learned about that whenever I went and interviewed student teachers at LR about a month ago, and they said, can we come by and see it in action? And I said, sure, and we sat around for about two hours, and she was just impressed of what she saw, so, um, they're gonna come back next year and bring their students and do some on-site training with them, which is super exciting, so just some neat things going on there. Uh, and just data-driven PLCs, and you'll see that continuously, and whenever I say data-driven PLCs, um, people roll their eyes sometimes, but we don't just collect the data, we do something with it, and it's actionable. So we look at the data and we change and move things, and, um, as they need to be moved. In math, uh, math fact fluency, we do reflect, reflex, and fracs, and the district's paid for that, um, that's been huge, and, um, we've seen, it's just, uh, uh, a gamification online thing that students can do for a small portion of the day to work on their, uh, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division skills. Um, general number sense, we bought some things out of Title One to help with that. Thinking classrooms, there's a picture on here, um, in the middle to the right as you're looking at it, um, that, uh, I had some teachers that I introduced to the Thinking Classroom methodology, and then over this past summer, I think I had about twelve to thirteen teachers that met during the summer on their own time in the building for about five to eight weeks, um, and went through this book study, and, um, the Thinking Classroom talks about not just being mimickers, a lot of times we have kids in classrooms and we say, I just want you to do it just because it's the way I do it, and this is the method to do this. Um, whether it's regrouping, or whether it's multiplication, uh, multiplying multi-digit numbers, but really making them think instead of just being mimickers. Um, and once again, data-driven PLCs. Um, social emotional behavior, we call that SEB of all the acronyms we use here, um, in the education world, and, um, I, I love every, like, I'm, I get excited about all this, and, because we live it, we eat it, we breathe it. But our SEB program has been a process, and, um, we had, um, we do a lot of great things with intervention with reading and math, a lot of times whenever it comes to social, emotional, and behavioral needs, we don't have that tier system, well, we've worked on creating that this year, and we sat down with Kristy Starnes, a behavioral specialist, and, um, there's a few others in the district that came and partnered with us one day and started talking to us about it, and we brought them back in, and we sat down for four hours one day and said, let's create a process, let's start working on this. So we've actually developed a systematic process to monitor the SEB needs at Bethlehem, to run them through, uh, tier-one processes, tier-two processes, and tier-three processes, and then to monitor that data and to look at that. So we did that, we rolled it out, um, across the school, and, um, and started implementing that, and we, we have, I'm probably telling you five success stories of kids that started through that process, and that we have now seen lots of growth from, and we have data to show that, not just, well, I think he's acting better, no, there's data to show that. Um, so there's lots of other things, there's terrific kids, student shout-outs, attendance tracking monthly, um, um, Ms. Metz, our school social worker, she's done an outstanding job helping us with this SEB process, but she also has helped with the attendance tracking. Uh, monthly, we track every grade level's attendance, and then, um, the grade level with the highest percentage of attendance, uh, they get ten minutes extra recess, and that's like gold at elementary school, uh, for both the students and the staff, it's a great competition. Uh, she just did her monthly attendance awards, um, where she takes everybody that, um, has, has, hasn't had a unexcused absence, um, or, and hasn't had any absences, and they get to go outside and, um, enjoy about twenty minutes out, outside playing, and so we clump them together in grade level, so just a lot of things, but she staffs that, and she, she heads that up, so she does an outstanding job, and then just our PBIS focus, so, um, I could talk about all day long, I think they were talking about the balloons over Bethlehem, I'm just gonna, this picture right here is that, that, um, and, we see Dr. Heffner in there, but our fifth graders did that, Ms. Ortiz did that in partnership with Ms. Esposito, and, um, just our kids love that, you should see them, they have these Finch robots, and they, uh, read balloons over Broadway, and they actually code these robots, they create the balloons based around the story, and they code these robots to, uh, have a parade down the hallway. And it's pretty neat to see, and, and our other, um, our younger grade levels come out and line the hallways and watch it, uh, so a pretty neat experience, so you talk about bringing fun into it, um, it's really exciting. Um, a few other things, you know, you see the kids up here learning, and our fourth graders in the top middle there, um, they're outside with kindergartners, book buddies, they do that every Friday. Um, so just building that camaraderie across the school, and then, um, at the bottom, you've already heard this, part of Battle of the Books, uh, won the district Battle of the Books, um, for the second year in a row, uh, Ms. Allison Brown, uh, leads that charge for us, and we will go to regionals next week, I will be there. I never miss a Battle of the Books competition, um, and, uh, because I'm super competitive, and I like to cheer them on. Um, if you can't tell, I love competition, I think it means success as long as it's done healthy, and, um, but they're gonna go to the regionals, and we have a super strong team this year that, um, I can't wait to see them perform. So, um, so lots of good things with instructional excellence. Making learning fun, um, you know, it's, if all it is ABCs, one-two-threes, and you're not having fun, then, then that's on you, and that's kinda what I, uh, you gotta have a good time, you gotta love what you're doing. Um, and, you know, sometimes you gotta lead from the front, you see me in my taco costume in the top, uh, yes, I, I did dress up as a taco, um, I can't remember why I had to do that, but something, I'm drawing a blank, but something that the students raised a month, oh, it's the Fun Run, actually, uh, we did the Fun Run at the beginning of the school year, and, um, we've really went with our, with our fundraisers, instead of selling products and those kinda things, uh, making it to where, um, we wanna create an experience for our kids. Um, and, um, I'm just proud to say we raised over twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars at our Fund Run fundraiser, and that, that's phenomenal, um, we, parents, people all over the United States, all over the country were donating, um, so that, that was incredible. Um, our math and reading nights, um, those have been top-notch, we pay for that at Title One funds. Our innovative school schedule, I'm gonna pause and talk about that a little bit, um, me and, uh, Dr. Heffner and, and, and Amy Dago, we went and visited some lab schools, and, um, uh, we came back and we said, you know, how can we get creative in our schedule, how can we add some fun, uh, create, uh, bring in some community members, and, um, also create a space where our teachers can have a little bit of additional planning, it's no secret, elementary teachers, um, you know, they don't have as much planning as middle and high school, so, you know, what does that look like? Next year, Letters Days aren't gonna be there, and so, um, so already thinking forward to how can we be proactive in that, and, um, and so we, we ended up coming back and creating this innovative school schedule to where we grouped our grade levels together in grade bands, so we have K-one, two, three, and four, five, and we picked a Friday, and we scheduled out Fridays, and we said, this Friday, uh, four, five is gonna have their innovative school day. We took our teacher assistants, and we made it to where between them and some other staff, they could cover the classrooms, um, and a lot of fun learning's going on, so it's not just they're sitting there doing nothing, and our teachers are pulled out, and they are digging into data, they're having a full day of PLCs, data dives, and that kinda thing. Um, so I actually went back to my school, and I said, what if I could tell you, once a month or once every blue moon, we could do this, and it wouldn't just be, you know, it'd be for you, but also for the kids, right? Um, and we could build in community activities, and they said, yeah, tell us more, so we just dug into it. We have now had three of those, so we've hit the whole school, and now we're starting back on a second round, just experimenting, seeing what does this look like, and it's been wonderful. Um, the kids have, uh, fourth and fifth grade students from the get-go, we brought in a soap carver, so there's about an hour of a community event that we have, a soap carver came in, um, Alvin Woody, um, and he showed him how to soap carve and, and, and taught him about that, and it's kind of a prerequisite to wood carving, and then, um, we gave all the kids little baggies, and they got to soap carve. And, uh, you wouldn't believe it, but you can carve a bar of soap with a popsicle stick. You don't need a chisel, you don't need a knife, but literally, we put a popsicle stick in there, we put a number of others, just small items, I mean, any kinda sharp, pointy item, a pencil in and of itself, um, but the kids had a blast all the while. Teachers were, were grinding and getting their, their, their planning done, digging into data, um, so it's just been a really neat experience, um, and, and you see a picture of this young man here in the middle with his soap carving. Uh, he's super proud of it, it's a bear, you can't see from there, but, um, uh, it's pretty neat, and, um, so we've been doing that, and it's, it's been really cool, uh, we've done a couple other things, Hidden Art Center came in and talked about Signature Quilts, and, um, we had, um, we had the farmer come in and talk about the, the spreader and whatnot, so, um, lots of exciting things there, uh, the STEAM class, I've talked about frog dissection, uh, Ms. Ortiz, our Teacher of the Year. Um, she had, uh, frog dissection that she did, she got through the Educational Foundation grant that she wrote, um, field trips, archery, you've heard about that at Bethlehem, but we still pride ourselves in having the archery going on in the gym. Sky Dome, our PTO paid for this Sky Dome, which is just an indoor planetarium, uh, up there in the top, came in, it blew up, they got to go in and, and have about a forty-five minute presentation on the, uh, the solar system. Uh, CTE came in, so we thank Crystal Hoke and her team, and, uh, they filled up our lower parking lot with all kinds of stations, and all the students went around and did the, all the things that they do, I can't na- name them all, but they did an outstanding job with that. Um, benches, B-bots, Merge Cube, Jessica Esposito, she lives in our building as much as we'll allow her to, and we try to get her over there as much as we can, but she has a huge impact on our kids and, and all of our classes, so just making learning fun. Um, and we do all this, and, and does it take extra time and effort? Yes, but it's well worth it. Um, and it's not me, I, I'm just, I'm able to stand up here and talk about it, it's, it's these individuals that are here today and others that aren't here on my staff that's putting in this time and effort to do this. Um, so just, just, but that's part of our, that's part of our vision and mission, right? Make it fun, um, and, and to have fun with it, so, um, there's, uh, community involvement and other pieces, I talked about the Fun Run, and the archery's up here, um, our PTO's active and growing, K-one furniture grant, I just wanna give you an update on that. They were delivering furniture today as I was leaving, and this is a picture of that up here, uh, so our K-one furniture grant, and I wanna thank everybody in this room that helped vote for that, because that was a county effort, that was a state effort, uh, forty thousand dollars of brand-new classroom furniture. Uh, top of the line is being delivered to one, to our science classroom, Ms. Ortiz's classroom, as you speak, tomorrow morning, the kids are gonna come in, and, um, they're gonna get to see that furniture, they're gonna get to sit in it, they're gonna get to be part of that process, uh, they're gonna have a professional videographers there, videoing it and documenting it for their company, and, um, so it's super exciting stuff, but that doesn't happen without all of us here. Um, so that's exciting, uh, different PD, different, just all kinds of stuff, I mean, I, I could stay up here for hours, and I know if there's a timeline, I've completely messed that one up. But, um, but we're just intentional, we're intentional, we're laser-focused, and, and we have people that are just willing to go the extra mile. And, and that's, that's all, and I can't say that enough, um, they are, they're, they're calling me on Saturday mornings, hey, what do you think about this? Or texting me, uh, uh, the wee hours of the night, um, we just have great people, um, at Bethlehem, um, here's some of our of the years, they were just announced last year, Ms. Ortiz is the Teacher of the Year at the top, uh, Ms. Allison Brown, our Certified Support Staff, you heard about her earlier, uh, for the second year in a row, and then our Classified Support Staff, um, Ms. Anita Boshin, and, um, so just, just great people and, uh, great things going on at Bethlehem. So, um, just as, as I wrap things up, this is the last slide, I promise, you're probably thinking, here we go, um, we should've timed him three minutes, but, uh, but no, but, but serious, like, as I wrap up, I do want to leave you, each one of you guys have a puzzle piece sitting right here on, on your, uh, platform here. Uh, Dr. Heffner, you have one too, Mr. Gwes, you do as well. Um, so you're part of this puzzle as well, right? Each one of you guys, so I gave every staff member a puzzle piece, I had a commu- community involvement event, which was phenomenal, um, about a month ago, and every one of them took one home as well. I'm out of puzzle pieces, this thing only had a hundred and eight, and I actually gave them some farm puzzle pieces, because I wanted to save some of these for you, but don't tell them I said that. So, um, but I, I'll say this, I tasked my staff, I said, every one of you are a piece of this puzzle. Every one of you, and this picture here isn't complete without every one of us. Nobody is more or less important, I get the same puzzle piece as each one of my staff members get, nobody is more or less important, but takes every- Nobody is more or less important, but it takes everybody to make this picture. And you know, each year, our puzzle pieces look different, but this year, we're losing three of ours. And you guys have heard today of the public comment of what's going on. And yes, tough decisions have to be made, okay? And, and it is unfortunate because there's three of our puzzle pieces that will not be with us next year. And yes, will we figure it out? We will. But we have people that are hurting. Administrators had to sit and tell their people. I had to tell three, Mr. Lell had to tell many more than I had to tell. Every principal had to sit down with somebody and Dr. Chlor had to tell every one of them. Every principal had to sit down with somebody and say, next year, it's possible that you're not coming back. And that's hard. And I think you heard the hearts of the people tonight, but I just want to tell you, that's tough and I know we have to make tough decisions. And so I'm not, you know, knocking that, but whatever we do moving forward, we need to make sure that we don't have to do this again. Because it's not fun. And so just as I close, you're part of that. So thank you for what you do. I wouldn't want to be sitting in your seats right now. I'm just gonna be honest with you. I've heard other people say the same thing. We're, we're losing some really great people and we're probably gonna lose more before it's all done and said with. But at the end of the day, we're here for the kids. Our, our mission and our vision don't change. Even though we're gonna lose some people that's near and dear to our hearts, it won't change because we're here for the kids. And at the end of, at the end of the day, Johnny, Suzie, Billy, Evelyn, Hadley, they're all gonna walk across that threshold. And we gotta be there to receive them and teach them. So we'll continue to do that. But I just want to, I just felt like I needed to show, a lot of my principal friends are not here tonight. They're at Soul and Water. But you know, just so if you see a principal, if you talk to some of the individuals that have been told that, you know, just, it's been hard for them because they don't have a job. We just had to tell them. So I appreciate what y'all do. I appreciate y'all letting me have this time tonight. And if you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Do you have your pre-K stats?
As far as the numbers?
Yeah, that would be coming in next year.
I, I do not have that really available. My data manager may know ballpark. The pre-K, do we have pre-K numbers yet? We don't have pre-K.
Okay. Great presentation. Thank you.
I got a couple of comments. Number one, I do appreciate you. Bethlehem is very near to my heart. I've been there my whole life. I know a lot of people sitting here. I want to thank you for coming tonight. It says a lot about our schools and our employees. And you come tonight with a purpose and I heard that purpose. I'm gonna say from the start, from this, from early in the year, I stated I did not want to go this route and I'm still stating it tonight, there's, there's gonna be a better way. I think if we all stay together, that this will get better. So I'm trying to be encouraging, but I do feel for people. I hope that this don't happen. My prayer is this don't happen and we do figure out a way. I will ask like I do just about every month, everybody here is concerned and cares. Your commissioners need to hear the same thing that you just said tonight. They need to hear that you, you want to be heard. Everybody sitting here that lives in this county is paying taxes and you deserve for them to hear you. And I feel like they need to help us right now versus the, I've been here 12 years and I can say tonight, we need help right now, the worst we've ever needed. So I would say, reach out to them and ask for a little bit of help. We're not asking for a bailout. We're not asking somebody to take everything off of us. We will make some hard decisions, but with a little bit of help, we could maybe figure this out with some time and not do things that we're gonna regret. I don't want to look back a year from now and see people that are gone that didn't need to be gone. I don't want to look back and have regrets. So I want to thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you for caring about kids. That's what we're all here for. And Charles, thank you for everything you do. Every day I go by Bethlehem and I'm, I'm proud to be a citizen of Bethlehem. It's, it's, it's a wonderful place.
Ms. Bowman, I want to add on to your comments. I thank y'all for being here tonight too. This is a larger problem than Alexander County. This is a state problem. It's happening everywhere. But until our state starts funding public schools at the level they're supposed to, this is gonna happen year after year. And if our local government does not step in and fill in the gap where the state is shorting us, it's, it's just gonna continue and it's gonna be bad. So we need our communities to contact local and state levels to fund our schools at the rate that they should be and at the levels that they should be. So thank y'all for coming, but we, this is a bigger fight than right here. We've got to fight it in our county and we've got to fight it in our state.
It was announced today in a legislative update by the North Carolina Association of School Administrators that in the short session, the rumor has gotten out that they are going to increase opportunity scholarships by $300 million.
And you know, I don't have a problem if they want to increase opportunity scholarships because I agree, parents should have a choice, but don't take it from public schools.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good job.
Next on the agenda, we have Board of Education Committee reports. Any committee leads want to make an update?
Chairman Argüés, I would be happy to provide an update. As far as the superintendent search update, I've received information from Eddie West and Jim Watson. They are delighted to advise that they are right on schedule with the superintendent search and are in the process of screening all applications to assess how the candidate compares to the criteria that we established as a Board of Education. The meticulous screening process that their team is utilizing is critical to the search as any social media information by the applicant that is questionable, when combined with the credit and reference checks, can eliminate a candidate from the process. That allows them to prevent an issue from occurring that could put us as the Board of Education in a negative light at a later date. The application deadline is this Friday, April the 19th, 2024 at midnight. They are gonna use the next week to do the credit, social media and refer checks and narrow down the candidate field down to those candidates for us to interview. They are confident that regardless of whom we select, he or she will continue to bring honor and integrity to the Alexander County Board of Education. Best wishes, Eddie West and Jim Watson.
Thank you. Any other committee updates?
I don't have a committee update, but I want to add on to the superintendent search because I just like facts out in the public and I'm not on Facebook, but I do hear that there's rumors about the superintendent's search and that Dr. Heffner's heading this search up and will be selecting her replacement. And I just want to squelch that. The school board is doing it. There's seven members. We're responsible, good or bad, good hire, bad hire, it's us. She has no part in it.
We have some, we have some good keyboard warriors out there.
That's what I mean.
Mr. Chair, as Chair of Facilities, I would ask the Facility Group to get together in the next week for a meeting. We are just going to discuss the possible sale of the old Head Start building, the people that are leasing that has an interest. We need to start that process and I would like to be able to come back by the May meeting and present to the whole board our recommendations. So I'll ask tonight for Facility members to give me a date for next week to meet with that.
Very well.
Do we have an update from our board liaisons or Dr. Heffner from our meeting with the commissioners? Does anybody have an update? Has there been any information given to us from that meeting?
No, the commissioners, I'll speak to that or unless you want to speak to that, Josh?
You go ahead.
The, the commissioners had a meeting. We had a meeting with Josh Lell and, and with Mr. Pennell, Josh and I yesterday evening. They had questions on our requests that had been presented to them on the number of issues, whether it be directly on, on the CTE role, whether it was on the, the cost of benefits headwind that we have, the additional headcount losses that we've had in our enrollment or ADM. And we, it was an open discussion. No decisions were made in terms of feedback or commitments from them. It was purely for their information. They wanted some clarification on the nature of the numbers. And I think that in the upcoming commissioners meeting, they'll be discussing it amongst themselves and presenting us with their decision. Josh, anything to add to that?
No, sorry. You, you got it.
The only question that I had filled it yesterday, the county manager, Shane Fox, asked me for the capacity of each building and the current enrollment in each building. And I shared with him via email exactly what I had shared with you all on our weekly highlight.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there any reason why they wanted that or is any of the commissioners, are they wanting us to close a school or I mean?
I just received an email requesting that information.
Okay.
Well, we, in our discussion that we had jointly with the commissioners, we openly stated to them the capacity utilization that we have in our existing footprint, that the vast majority of our elementary schools are under 50% utilized. And that that opens up, what are we gonna do as we continue seeing the continued erosion in our ADM? As we all know, we've lost 1,000 kids out of our system in the last 10 years. We see that in the last year, we lost another 103 from the numbers that came back from our latest report out to the state. And that curve, looking at the census data, is telling us the newborns through eight-year-old individuals, that pattern's gonna continue moving into the future. We are simply losing kids in our school system. And it's, as Board Member Ryan had stated, this isn't just an Alexander County only problem. This is statewide. Most rural communities in our state are encountering the same macro dynamics in the census distribution. We've lost 20% of our kids of school age in the last 10 years and yet our 55 and over population's gone up in excess of 30%. And that's continuing as that pattern. And as long as we continue losing kids in our school system, we're gonna continue having these problems because all funding comes to us and is keyed by enrollment. You know, and we can't, we can't ignore that. It's, we, we operate as a cost center, as a school, right? And enrollment is the driving function of where we get our appropriations from state, federal and not our local government. Local government's been generous, if you look at it on a per basis over time, because it's gone up on per individual because our population's been going up.
They've not given us more money. It's just looks like it per pupil. That's correct. That's right.
The numbers have stayed flat.
I'm agreeing, right.
Even though our enrollment goes down, it's stayed flat.
You can make that look however you want to. Same amount of money.
Same money as our enrollment goes down.
But we have the same number of schools. We have the same.
Excuse, yes. The issue being enrollment is the problem that we have to, to, to identify. So I think that the nature of the question was because we did point that out in our joint meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago with our commissioners, that we have a demographic problem. We have a problem with the number of students enrolled in our schools and in our system. And we know that problem's gonna get worse as we move forward into the future. So I don't know how we can wave our wand and find young couples to move into Alexander County and start making more babies and getting more children into our school system. That's the ultimate solution to this problem.
And Chairman, as citizens, we all need to know a few things. We need to be voicing to our state officials because like one example, and Dr. Heffner may be mad if I say this, she can fire me if she wishes.
I think that that's backwards.
Like our enrollment this year, we get 100 plus or negatives to stay in the same amount of money. We was 103, so we was three students over, okay? My eyes look at, we're gonna refund three students allotment. That ain't the case. We had to almost give back close to $300,000 over three kids. So stuff like that is part of the reason we get in some of the mess we're in. And our state could, we sent in a request and asked if they could help on that and they denied it. So those are things that our state could do better jobs at, that I think is not asking any unfair movement on their part. So when you're, when you're reaching out to government officials, read out to them state people too, because they need to hear that we elect them just like we do county people. That's just my two cents.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Bowman on, is there any update from Mr. Suttle on the football field?
Yes. Do you want to comment on that or you want me to?
Yeah, I don't mind to.
Okay, go ahead.
An RFQ has been shared as far as to get, we would like to talk to three different companies about doing the work on the field and the track. And it appears that for what needs to be done, based on what the engineer and architect have told us, that we would have the appropriate amount of funding to do that.
And that funding came from Mr. Suttle, correct?
He earmarked that in the state budget.
Okay, thank you.
About $2.5 million?
Yes.
$2.5 million.
But you said over a kid, you had to send the money back. By Christian, they give, they give their money?
The state does give them money through opportunity scholarships of which they are, are not held accountable for anything. They are not held accountable for attendance. They are not held accountable for testing. They are not held accountable for anything, but they get state dollars.
That's sort of, to answer some of your questions, some of my gripe has always been, as a parent, you send your kid wherever you want to. That's your family decision. But if, if you're gonna take my tax money to do it, that child should be tested and held accountable the same way. If they get to that point. That's, that's sort of the deal. If, if everybody's on the same level, I don't have a problem where you send your child. That's your, that's your decision. But it ain't fair to the taxpayers to struggle like we're struggling right now. And we have a lot of hoops to jump through and they don't. So that's, that's the difference. And that's always the argument. And I'm sure I'll be the bad guy before I get home for saying that, but that's it.
Well, I mean, it's different business, but you know, the parents has got to pay for that child to school. You know, like in a, you know, a Christian school, private school, whatever, you know, they gotta pay to send that kid. They may get a grant or whatever to send it. You know what I mean? And do, but a parent at public school, you know, we are depending on the tax money to send our kids to school.
Absolutely, yes.
That was my point earlier. If they're gonna have, let parents have a choice, that's fine. And that is being pushed nationwide. And that's fine. But they're taking money from the public school fund that our taxpayer dollar puts in to fully pay for public education. They're pulling that money because they pull stuff from us all the time and they give us unfunded mandates all the time. And so take the money from elsewhere. You know, the lottery was gonna save us. That's how they passed it. We can't even use the lottery money how we want to. We have three ways we can use lottery money. We can't even pay a teacher with lottery money. So the state gives all these rules to us, that's where, when I came on this board, I realized that's where most of the problems lie between the, they tell the public schools what they can do and what they can't do and, and we have to follow the rules.
It's not the employees that work it, it's not the teachers that work in private. They don't get state benefits, right?
No, they're paid by the school they work for.
Any other questions? Very well.
Mr. Dagenhart, do you want to touch on the Booster Club fundraiser coming up?
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Booster Club will be May, Saturday, May 18th at the high school at 6 o'clock. Please come out to support Alexander County Booster Club. I'll be grilling steaks with others and come out and enjoy it. and come out and enjoy it, we have some good fellowship, and, see you then.
May 18th. Thank you. Very well, next on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Dr. Heffner.
I want to start with an update to the board with the timeline and actions for the Reduction in Force Directive that was given to me by the Alexander County Board of Education during the meeting that took place on February 13th, 2024. A timeline was provided to board members, and I want to recap what has happened in the month of March. Administrators completed all of their observations, they gathered data and provided that to the HR department through spreadsheets, they have also completed their summative evaluations, all of that happened by March 29th, and then, of course, spreadsheets were created based on criteria, a multitude of criteria for each employee, and things went from there as far as generating a list. In April, HR, they continued to look at that data, we had the attorney from Asheville look at our data to make sure that we had not weighted something inappropriately, or that we had missed something in the criteria for the RIF. Once the potential employees were determined, they have been met with by Alicia Clor and administrators, and I have one mistake here, the 21 employees, I said that they all had had the meeting, however, Dr. Clor has one more to do in the morning, she was not able to catch up with that person this afternoon, so we're short one person, but all of those meetings have been held, the ESER positions, where those, the funding, you know, that funding goes away, those meetings with the ESER employees will start later this week, and then during closed session tonight, I will present to all of you the list of names for potential RIF, and no action will be taken on that list, but you will be informed of those that have had the meeting.
So we will see for the first time, 20 out of the 21 names, or all 21 names?
You'll see all 21 names, I will tell you the one employee that has not had a meeting, but no action taken on that tonight, Dr. Clor tried to stress with employees that this was a potential list. We anticipate, two resignations came in yesterday, we anticipate some movement, and we are going to do our very best to backfill as many of the people as possible, but, so, so nothing has happened officially as far as board action. In May, official notice will be given to the staff members, and then, of course, with that information, they will be provided additional information about insurance coverage, if they are eligible for that, they will also be informed of board hearings in that process, and then I will present to you all a final list that you will approve at the Board 14, excuse me, the May 14th Board of Education meeting. The month of June has been earmarked for hearings, because staff members are eligible to request a hearing from the board. Any questions about the timeline or the update?
Very clear.
Okay. I also wanted to share with you, I mentioned that the North Carolina Association of School Administrators, we had a state meeting today, it was a webinar, and these will be the areas that we will focus with the General Assembly during the short session. The first is recruiting and retaining the best public school employees, and a lot of that has to do with pay. Also, the second bullet, the K-12 Accountability System Reform, we are asking the General Assembly to reconsider the current accountability model, where growth only counts for 20% and proficiency counts for 80%, and then the third thing that we're going to focus on is adequate and equitable resources for schools and districts, and I'm, I'm just going to put in a plug here, I don't care how you vote, I just want you to vote. Historically in North Carolina, educators have not done their job getting out to the polls and voting. Everyone, especially educators, have a lot at stake at the November election, and if you don't know how critical your vote will be, you need to listen to the following statistics. One-third of teachers in North Carolina make below the livable wage. North Carolina has been ranked 48th for public school funding in the nation, and 49th for public school funding effort when compared to the rest of the nation, and this was using data from the 2020-2021 school funding year. Folks, if you don't get out and do something, something will be done to you.
Dr. Heffner, that, those statistics there, has anybody ever looked at the way the lottery is spent or allocated for 1 through 50?
Lottery funding, I've never seen.
I'd just, it'd be interesting to see of the states that have.
How the different states use theirs.
The higher states, what their lottery money is allocated to, for the public school systems.
I haven't, I'm sorry.
Because you already mentioned about the lottery.
Dr. Heffner, can I, since we're talking about voting, and I'm not telling people how to vote either, but I'm making you aware, that I believe, if I'm not mistaken, on the November ballot will be to make the school board partisan or nonpartisan in this county, so however you feel about that, I believe that's coming up on our ballot in November, so, I know there are strong feelings both ways, so I think people should be aware.
And something that I have done, I've taken it upon myself to do, I was contacted by the Board of Elections in Alexander County, because evidently during the primary, some of our school staff tried to use their school ID as their photo ID to vote. Well, guess what? We have filled out the appropriate paperwork and have sent it in, asking that this photo ID suffice for your photo ID to vote. I want you out there, I want you registered, and I want you at the polls voting, because folks, you better start reading, and you better start listening to what's happening to public education nationwide, but it applies right here.
So, right now, we are considered nonpartisan, we don't have to have a primary, whoever's on the ballot runs in November, you're elected in November, so it doesn't matter your political party, you, you don't have to be Republican or Democrat, but if it becomes a partisan office, that means that you would have to file in the Republican, as a Republican or a Democrat to be able to run, then if there's, based on the number of seats open and the number of people running, there could possibly be a primary, so then that would kick somebody out, and then you could have like a Democrat and a Republican against each other, that causes it to be a partisan seat.
There's one more up to that. If we choose as a community to go partisan, that'll trigger an event where we today are noncompliance as a board, per the, the folks in Raleigh and the latest statements that came to us as of last year, that we need to redistrict our school system so that there's one board member per district, as opposed to the shared district ones, like we have right now with Mr. Bowman, myself, and Wittenberg in Bethlehem, yeah, so that redistricting would tie at the same time, so you would see movement happening in the redistricting activities over the course of post-November timeframe.
He's really hard.
Is it?
He is.
I'm sorry, did it, so you didn't hear what I said?
I, I did hear what you said, but I just wanted to make sure, maybe you say it again, or save your microphone?
Wow, is that better?
That is better.
Oh my gosh, here I've been babbling and nobody could hear me, I'm sorry.
The other ones I can hear, but it's.
It's my soft gentle voice.
Maybe I can hear it.
So, so what's going to happen is during this election in November, when we decide or not decide to make this partisan, one of the points that's going to have to be corrected moving forward beyond into, into the 16, or, yeah, 2026 timeframe and, and that point forward, is to redistrict our schools, because the way that we're districted right, right now, we have multiple representatives inside one district, and per state rules that have been clarified here in the last year, we need to have one per district, and so you're going to see some lines being redrawn and redistricting of your board member seats after this election, so just don't be surprised by that, but the two are going to probably go in concurrence on the partisan, nonpartisan vote, and also the redistricting activity that we will have as a school system.
But the redistricting is not something that's a vote on the ballot, correct?
No, it's, it's, it's something that we need to clean up after this next election.
Yes. Okay. Bullet number three in my report, the visit with the North Carolina Attorney General, Josh Stein, went very well yesterday. Attorney General Stein spoke with staff and students from Alexander Central High School about the vaping and social media issues surrounding our youth at present. I was very impressed with the students and their candidness about their use of technology and the amount of screen time that consumes much of their time every day, and I see some heads shaking, some of the people here were involved in that meeting, in that discussion. I want to thank the staff members and students that participated in this critical conversation. Then bullet number four is your April report, it is attached in your agenda, you can read it as, as well as I can, the only thing that I wanted to mention is that we have had some movement with the family engagement, the Family Academy is planning on some sessions on how to help your child academically, and app awareness and social media warnings, and I think that is very wise on the Family Academy's part. Staff vacancies, we still need a custodian to share between the central office and Taylorsville, and there have been no new postings as far as staff vacancies, and then I'm going to let you all read the rest of that, and that is attached for everyone's information. Bullet number five, dates for upcoming events, it's the time of year where we will have a lot of special events, I'm going to rely on you to put these in your calendar. On May 3rd, we have Special Olympics starting at 8:30 at the ACHS Stadium, Football Stadium. On May 19th, that's a Sunday by the way, Honor Graduate Ceremony, that will begin at 3 o'clock in the auditorium. May 20th, graduation for Alexander's Early College, that will be at the auditorium starting at 6:00. On June 6th, there will be a retirement celebration for Alexander County school employees retiring, and that will be at 6:00 at the ACHS Cafeteria, and then on June 7th, ACHS graduation that starts at 7 o'clock in the stadium. I want to thank my head night Phantom family, oh, I got my gift today, I'm sorry I missed you, but this is the Phantom Family Cookbook, and Amy Daigle knows that I love to cook, I love to eat, I love to do lots of stuff, but I cannot wait until I have more time on my hands, because I am going to be making some of the recipes that my Phantom family put together in their cookbook, so that was the best part of my day, thank you. And then two items of good news, one has been referenced earlier today, and this is hot off the press, but I learned today that Madame Greiner has been selected as the 2024-2025 North Carolina American Association of Teachers of French as their Teacher of the Year. A round of applause. Madame Greiner was notified that she will be recognized at the Fall Business Meeting during the FLANC Fall Conference, that's October 5th and 6th, at the Benton Convention Center in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Congratulations, Nancy.
Congratulations.
Also, Dr. Alicia Clor, Executive Director of HR and Auxiliary Services, has been selected to serve as a member on the Professional Conduct Advisory Committee for the state. That is very prestigious, and it speaks highly of her, so congratulations, Dr. Clor. And lastly, school board members and central office administrators, you are invited to visit the Student Success Center this Friday between 10:15 and 10:30, that's when these students will have their art class, that's sponsored by the Bridge Community, and I just need you to let me know if you're planning to drop by, I will have Amy Johnson looking for you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, um, Dr. Mr. Draper made a statement about visiting him here in the upcoming weeks, what's?
I don't have that date yet, I'll be glad to share that in my weekly highlights.
Very well, thank you.
I had one comment I meant to make during committee updates, you mentioned about the vaping and social media issues that was addressed the other day, I, I'd like to give a shout out to our Health Department and the council that's been working on the substance reviews, I attended the parent meeting, the community night, they did the auditorium a few weeks ago on Wednesday night, there's a lot of work going on that, and I want to commend them, because as a parent, I was educated that night, I thought that I realized the extent the vapes have got to, and anybody that's worked in a high school, and from what I understand now, even a middle school knows what an issue it's become, and, so kudos not just to Attorney Stein for addressing it, but our local folks are putting a lot of work in that, and our school system's been working with them to partner to get their students and community educated, so kudos to them.
Well, his visit was a result of the letter that I drafted and sent to him, challenging him to continue to go after companies, because they are very much marketing to youth, they can tell that they're not all they want to, but when you do bubble gum, and cotton candy, and cherry, and flavors like that in a vape, that's targeting young people.
It's far more nefarious than that, when you're, you're hiding the devices.
Oh, yeah, you make them look like highlights.
Correct, that's, that's where the purpose of that becomes intuitively clear.
Yes, it was good. Other questions or comments?
Very well, unfinished business?
Hello, we have four policies up tonight for second reading, Policy 3610, the Counseling Program, Policies 6220, Operation of School Nutrition Services, Policy 6401, Ethics and the Purchasing Function, and Policy 9125, Participation by Minority Businesses. There are no changes since last month at the first reading, so I ask for approval of these policies on second reading.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Motion carries, all approved. So the board approves Policies 3610, 6220, 6401, and 9125. So now we're going into new business, so Ms. Robinette is going to review.
We have five policies up for first reading tonight, Policies 7100, Recruitment and Selection of Personnel, Policies 7130, Lysenger, Policies 7510, Leave, Policies 7520, Family and Medical Leave, and Policies 7730, Employee Conflict of Interest. Please review those and get any feedback to Ms. Mack.
Do any board members have any questions regarding any of these policies at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, item B, under New Business, Alternates for Sugarloaf Elementary School Project, Frank Williams, Pinnacle Architecture.
And we also have representatives with us from JM Coop.
Next one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, I'm here tonight, I know all of you have been out to the construction of the Sugarloaf Building, and I'm sure that you find it as exciting out there as we as the architects do, really coming together well, we've got a good contractor, the, the workmanship is absolutely beyond compare, and it, it's time now that we move on to, as you know, when we got the base bid, I mean, the bids, we just selected to do the base bid, and we did not approve the alternates, and the alternates there are listed before you. Renovations, in fact, I was glad to hear that this is Library Week, Library Day or something earlier, so we're talking about the renovations to the existing gym into a media center, and to prop that building up, it's in disrepair on the backside, the, the ground's falling away from the building, and can, building, connecting, connecting corridor from, from the main building to the, to the new media center. Alternate two is to build a platform and ramp, a concrete ramp with rails around the, the media center and down to the playing field, and I know all of you are familiar with the ramps that are out there now, they're made out of wood and they, they go all over the place, but this one is pretty, pretty clean, I, I think if you move on to the next slide, or maybe the next, I think Chris put a slide in there that shows where that ramp is going, is there, yeah, if, if you'll see, that's looking at, at the media center, and you'll see to the left, you'll see some dark walls there, that's the connecting corridor back to the school, but on the, on the west, or, or the, the backside, you'll see we are connecting the paving out there, the, the patio that's there now, around the side of the building to a new patio, and then that starts the ramp down, and the ramp goes down around the corner and goes straight down to the playing field. straight down to the playing field. And that will shore up the backside of the media center building, or the existing gym. And where we're filling in, you'll see those hatch lines there running diagonal, we're filling in to shore up the backside. This is alternate number two is the ramp. And alternate number three is the demolition of the existing boiler, which is no longer in service, to take the boiler out and the associated piping. The recommendation from the architect is that we accept those alternates, move on. We've got money for it, and almost all the money's there. I think there might be a little bit left, but that money's available.
From the project, from the existing project, and to make up the difference. I'm sorry, I can't tell you if we'll take it out of half-cent sales tax, or if we'll take it out of our capital improvement money, but we have capital funding to cover the difference.
Well, one of the options that was presented to our commissioners was to shift some of our capital fund balance and reclassify it as expense, so that we could cover the $600,000 if we don't receive relief from the commissioners on that money. So, and we are only at 1.9 million in the capital fund balance. So, how much are we talking about here? Because I think that we...
No, 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 you're in the wrong pot. You're talking about fund balance. I'm talking about half-cent sales tax and capital renovation money from the state.
Very well.
You're in the wrong pot.
So, we will not be touching our fund balance, huh?
No, no.
Okay.
Members of JM Coat, the contractors that are here tonight, that can answer any questions you might have for the contractor, I can answer the questions for the architect. And with that, I will just make the recommendation that, it's our recommendation that we move on. We've got a good contractor on the job. He's familiar with the project. He bid the project. He's held these subcontractors at bay for six or eight months now, and you know, and I asked him a minute ago if they're still willing to do the project for the amount they bid, and he said yes. I recommend that we go ahead and do it while the contractor's there, and we can get it done. And as you know, Sugarloaf has needed work for years.
Amen.
We've added additions, which were good. We've added a new gym and office area now. And now it's time for the media center, and I recommend that we just go ahead and get it done while we've got somebody there that is capable of doing it and doing a good job.
Do we have a view of how much alternate one is? How much alternate two is?
Alternate one?
And then how much alternate three is? And in total, how much do we have left in the project?
I brought the tab sheet with me. Had a feeling you might ask that. Alternate one was $943,000. That's the media center renovations, which will give you a really nice media center in there. The platform ramp on the back is $298,000. And the demolition of the boiler and the removal of the pipes, it's $4,000. I think that's a total of like 1.245 million, something like that.
And Dr. Hefner, how much do we have left on the project at this point? Who wants completion?
I don't have that exact number. I'm sorry. We discussed that when we met about there were increased prices from the first bid or the first estimates that we had. There were increased prices of materials in the interim. But do you remember, Chad, exactly what those were?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you, Chad.
Good evening, I'm Chad Webb, Vice President for JM Coat. So, thank you for having me. I'll try to go through this quickly and answer any questions you have. So, to Frank's point, there are three alternates in the project. I'll start with alternate number one, which is the media center. Frank is correct. We had a base bid amount for alternate one of $943,000. Since then, you know, this pricing is about eight months out there. So, we went back, tried to make sure we hold our subcontractors to the bid day price. There was an uptick with some costs associated with that alternate number one, and the new revised alternate one price is $1,033,851. So, you got a delta between the revised pricing and the bid day price alternate of about 90,000, $91,000. Questions on that? And then alternate number two, to what Frank was just mentioning, is, well, the draw is not up, but it's all the ADA compliant handicap ramps behind the existing building. With that, we did have a base bid, alternate base bid price of $298,000. We were fortunate, we had only a small uptick with price of rebar and concrete escalations, and that value is about $7,155. So, very good, I think, you know, given that we were able to hold that price for, like I said, eight months. The project bid back in June of last year. So, we're almost a year into it.
So, that went to 305?
So, that's 305,155 for a alternate number two revised price. And then alternate number three, there's no price change with the removal of the existing boiler.
And then I think what Chairman Argüés was asking, how much of the remaining funds will we have as far as, and then what kind of difference are we looking at to use the half-cent sales tax or the capital improvement money?
Sure. So, I just, at a high level, we had some allowances that Pinnacle Architecture had put out to all the bidders on bid day. Of the unused allowances, so we carried a $600,000 site allowance. Of that $600,000 site allowance, I think we're able to give back roughly about $14,000 credit that was gonna be unused. Also, in additional bid day, there was $150,000, what we call unsuitable soles allowance to be carried in the base bid. Of that, to date, we have not used any money. It's our recommendation to the board, to Pinnacle, is to make sure you continue to carry some type of contingency, because we have work still to perform for Phase Two in the parking lot with the sanitary sewer that we gotta tie into the existing system. So, there's some things that potentially we don't know, right, could be in the ground we could hit. So, it'd be our recommendation to continue to carry some type of contingency for unsuitable soles. With all that being said, you're still having a cost savings of about $125,000 of that $150,000 site allowance. With that as well, we had some money for the IT technology. With that, we had a $200,000 allowance. To date, we've only spent $61,540, which gives you a balance of $138,460 of unused allowance money.
But when you say unused, is all IT expenses complete? Or do we still expect additional IT expenses to continue? So, all these line items, you said how much we've consumed.
Right.
Are we done consuming those line items?
In our mind, yes. The IT has been fully procured, material scope we have in our contract. So, you're gonna get a full IT package with this building. This is money that we're gonna give back to the school district at the end of the day for IT.
Well, based on the overview you gave us right now, we have sufficient funds remaining in the project and original budget to cover items two and three. Am I doing my math right?
That, no, you're not.
Okay, so...
So, right now, what I'm saying is roughly you have about $368,000 of unused allowance money that we're gonna give back to the project. I don't know what in addition from the sales tax or any of that.
I'm not including that. I'm talking about the project scope as originally stated and originally approved and originally kicked off. That original project scope, we have 300, and how much did you say that's gonna be?
368,000.
So, that does mean that we would be able to do two and three under that project scope right now, right? Without having to go into sales tax or any additional sources of funding.
Correct. Alternate two and three, you could find out of the unused allowance money.
So, it's a two-phase approval that we're looking for then, the way I'm seeing that. One is to complete two and three using the residual budgetary allowances that we have, nonspent monies, and move forward with two and three. And the second is to make a motion to formulate a plan on using sales tax to fund option one. And then, once that plan is formulated, to approve on that, or make a motion to approve on that. Am I reading this? Do we have any other input?
Dr. Hefner? You may not know this, do you know the sales tax totals we have? I know Sharon's not here, but, okay. What do we have in sales tax?
And around about number, about 8 million?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Scott, how do you wish, how do you propose we proceed?
I propose the facilities that we accept this and we keep these guys there. They've done a tremendous job. And I think it would be foolish to do all the work we've done at this school and not have a media center. I mean, I think that would look pretty foolish on our part. So, I'm recommending that we accept this bid and let these guys continue to work and finish this project out like we planned from the start.
So, is that the motion you're gonna make?
That's my motion.
I second that motion. I do, I second it.
So, we'll consolidate it all? We have sufficient funds, you're saying, and then sales tax balance into fund?
I agree. I appreciate just the openness of letting us know where funds and those kind of things are. In this unprecedented time of where we are for budgetary, we've gotta look and make sure that we've got the funds to be able to pay out and to do what we need to do.
That's right.
So, I agree. I agree with you.
And just to add, that sales tax money cannot be paid for, we can't use that for our budget shortfall for the public.
It's capital, yeah?
Right. That's being clear.
So, then we have a motion to proceed with approving one, two, and three. We have a second to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A good move.
Thank you.
I think you're gonna come out with a great building out there at Sugarloaf, believe it or not.
Took a long time.
So, now we have, Dr. Hefner, you're gonna share with us a consideration of bid for Bethlehem Elementary HVAC?
Thank you all for being here, Frank.
Thank you.
Chad, thank you guys. I am. This is item C in the agenda. You can see that you have two attachments. One is a letter of recommendation. The second is a little more detail. It has two slides in there, and it includes that letter of recommendation. The bids that we received for this HVAC project at Bethlehem, and again, we have remaining funds that have been approved that we use toward this project, okay? We received two bids, one from the Maintenance and Restoration Services of North Carolina at $70,406. They can do the project in 45 days. The second bid was from Hickory Sheet Metal Company Incorporated, and that totaled $95,600. The recommendation is that we accept Maintenance and Restoration Services of North Carolina's bid of $70,406 with a completion within 45 days of contracted start date. The funding used will be the remainder of that grant, and that was a North Carolina Needs Base Grant. Questions?
So, Scott, as Chairman of the Facilities Committee, what are your thoughts on this?
I propose that we accept the first bid and get them started where that can be done before...
I make a motion.
Before next school year.
So, you, we have a motion to accept the bid, bid number one.
Second.
Do we have a second? We have a second on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So, therefore, option one is approved.
Thank you.
Now, next we have Ms. Kathy Nepp to speak about Head Start Non-Federal Share Waiver for 2324.
Yes, good evening.
We've been waiting all day.
If all of you are well this evening. Yes, I have, I'm coming to the board tonight to get a motion to approve that we submit a non-federal share waiver for our program year. We have to collect 20% of our funded enrollment as non-federal share, and we are so close this year, closer than we've been in a very long time, but not quite there. So, I'd like approval to send in the waiver to the Office of Head Start.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next we have the Head Start Corrective Action Plan. Ms. Kathy Nepp?
Yes, we have finished our corrective action plan for the Office of Head Start for our FA2 monitoring, and I'd like approval tonight to send in our corrective action plan.
Any questions or comments from any board members? Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the corrective action plan.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our open session for the board. Do we have a motion to end open session?
Motion.
Second.
We have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Open session closed. Thank you.